Don't want to scare anybody. Let's call the meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, you're right. I am rucky move. Thank you very much. I'm waiting for you. You're waiting for me. At the notice of this meeting was advertised by Park Press and The Beacon on January 11th, 2024, and by posting this notice in the Forkett River and Little Harbor Post Offices, and by filing a copy of the notice in the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Connady?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
And we're going to go into executive session. Be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 60 minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion Peters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to have student representative comments, please.
So on March 4th, we're going to have our next SGA meeting, and then Battle of the Classes took place February 5th through 9th. Unfortunately, the juniors took first place, but what can we say? The freshmen are hosting a Sherpa fundraiser and are planning a potential Chipotle fundraiser. The sophomores hosted a night at Conchadora, and juniors are working on their May 2nd prom and the Kisses Senior Goodbye fundraiser, and we're currently working on our June 13th prom and senior events. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Anthony Eckerson, our senior representative for our unsung hero.
Hello, everyone. Okay, this month's unsung hero for grade 11, we have Brendan Schuler, who is an exceptional student who puts time, dedication, and hard work into all of his classes. He's a part of the STEM Academy at Lacy Township High School and is in many honors in AP classes. He's involved in Lacy Township High School's soccer, wrestling, and golf teams, where he spends many hours training. Brendan is an excellent example of a student athlete, as he is dedicated to his academics as well as his sports teams. For these reasons, Brendan is our unsung hero for the month of February.
And that's all we have to say.
Report from the superintendent?
Yes, thank you. All right. Brendan, where are you? Just made. Is your family here with you? All right. Can you stand up and be recognized too? We always recognize families. Congratulations. Congratulations, and I see you just made it. We didn't think you were going to make it here, so glad you did, and congratulations on being named unsung hero. It's one of our favorite awards, so good stuff. All right, welcome everybody to our February Board meetings. Hard to believe it's February already. I feel like every time we turn around, it's a Friday, and before you know it, it's going to be June, and we'll already be thinking about the next school year. However, I am going to talk a little bit about the budget, but before I do that, like I always do, I do want to recognize our artists. We have some amazing artwork on our superintendent's cover. I'm sorry, our superintendent's report. So that was designed by Zoe Coogan. She's a grade, a first grade student at Cedar Creek School, and Julia Siderek is a fifth grader at Cedar Creek as well. She designed the Board Agenda cover, and we always hang those in the board office. So I always encourage people to come over and see them because our walls are getting quite full, and we just love displaying the artwork. So congratulations to the two of them. Okay, so before we get to our student presentations, and we have quite a few of them tonight, which is always a great thing, I do want to talk a little bit about budget. So this past Tuesday, we had our second Budget Workshop meeting of the year, and that was in addition to a presentation by Synergistic. That is a company that is reviewing our energy savings performance. So they gave us their annual, it's actually our first report, and we're going to be communicating with them to get a little bit more information about where we are. So this time last year, we communicated that when factored in, the final year of S2 was going to be very, very impactful, and it has been. So unfortunately, if the final year of S2 does come to fruition, that is going to bring us to a staggering $11 million cut in our budget, and again, forcing us to make drastic changes, which are going to include reductions in staff, athletics, co-curricular clubs and activities, elimination of field trips, reductions in programs, and unfortunately, we're not even done yet. And the reason is because we don't know exactly what the state aid figure is going to be until the governor delivers his address on February 28th. So we are standing by and waiting for that, but we need everybody's help because waiting isn't good enough, and we've been talking about this a lot. So this morning, Sharon, our business administrator, and I provided testimony on behalf of the Lacy Township School District in front of the New Jersey Senate Education Committee that is chaired by Vin Gopau. So in our testimony, we thanked the committee for introducing what's called Senate Bill 2434, which would provide a tax levy cap adjustment for school districts experiencing reductions in state aids such as ours. Thankfully, the bill was released after everybody, it wasn't just us providing testimony, there were several school districts there. There were parents, there were students, there were board members. I'm going to say about seven school districts were represented, maybe a few more. So thankfully, the bill was released to the Senate Appropriations Committee for consideration, and so that's going to happen in a few weeks, and we will again go to the State House to provide testimony, again, on behalf of the Lacy Township School District. But today, we provide a testimony about the school funding formula in general in addition to Bill 2434. And along with the others who testified, we ask that the school funding formula be scrutinized because in its current form, it's broken and it's flawed. So we know that we are approaching the final year of S2, but the question that we now ask is, what's next? And that is what we ask for, that we sit, not just we, but that superintendents, that board members, that business administrators, sit at the table with lawmakers so that we can have a say in what the formula is going to look like in future years. So I started with, we need help, because what we did this morning was, I think, pivotal. I'm happy that the bill was released to the Appropriations Committee. We don't know what's going to happen next, but what we're asking our entire school community, I'm going to put this into an email tomorrow, is that everybody, everybody get in touch with our legislators, because we know the saying about squeaky wheel. And we've made it very easy for everybody to do this. So again, tomorrow, I'm going to be sending out an email with all of the details. It's going to include a sample letter, a very specific script for what you can say. We're asking that if you do make a phone call, that you always maintain respectfulness. That goes a long way. We were very respectful today in our testimony, and it was very much appreciative, appreciated on behalf of the senators that were sitting on the committee. So we ask that our school community does the same and represent our district well. We need to make our voices heard, and I think, I'd like to think, that if everybody makes a call and sends a letter, it's going to send a very loud message that our school district deserves better and that our students deserve better, and we can all be a part of that. So our testimony this morning was really important, and the fact that that bill again came out of committee and went on to the next step is definitely a step in the right direction. So tomorrow, an email will go out. I'm also going to be speaking to the entire staff tomorrow. We have Professional Development Day. All of this information is going to be posted on our website. There's going to be a link to each of the committee members. It goes right to a form. We're going to give you the information to drop in. We're going to tell you what the subject line is. We're going to tell you what to put in, what to choose from the dropdown so that it goes to the right place. So we've made it very, very foolproof, but the reason we did that is because we want a lot of voices. We want a lot of letters sent. We want a lot of phone calls to be made. We want things posted on social media, on Twitter, now called X, on Instagram, on Facebook, anywhere and everywhere. So we're going to be talking some more about this as we get closer to presenting our tentative budget in March, but we're going to be getting that information out very soon. Okay. That's all I have to say about that tonight. I am now going to turn it over to Mr. King to present our Seniors of the Month, Seniors of the Month, and that will be followed by several other presentations.
Good evening, Dr. Prera. Hello, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce tonight's February Students of the Month, Seniors of the Month. Our first senior of the month is Avery Hayes. Avery, come on down. Avery is joined by her family, so please round of applause for them as well.
Here we are to celebrate February's Seniors of the Month. Our first senior of the month is Avery Hayes.
My name is Avery Hayes, and I'm proud to be named LTHS February Senior of the Month.
Avery Hayes, hi. Congratulations on being named Student of the Month. I wasn't at all surprised when I heard that you have been chosen.
Congratulations, Avery, on winning Senior of the Month for February.
I'm the president of Interact. I'm the treasurer of DECA and SGA, and I'm a member of NHS and Student Reading Committee and FBLA.
Avery is this really cool combination of contradictions. On the one hand, she's really laid back and friendly. The other hand, she's super involved in the school and in her studies. She's part of NHS, she's treasurer of SGA, and she's president of Interact. She's very involved and active. She's super mature and serious, even in her face, her demeanor, and just her dedication to her studies.
I have to say, it was an absolute pleasure having you in class last year and getting to know you. I watched how hard you worked, and I actually, I witnessed how much you improved as the year went on, and that was reflected in your fantastic score on the AP exam.
Some of my favorite memories at LTHS are field trips with Interact Club and spending time with friends in my favorite classes.
So something that shows a lot about Avery's character, recently, we had Wizards Game, and she, I asked her to take control of the volunteers and take over that responsibility, and she and Lily Soul together really did an outstanding job, just completely directing. I didn't have to ask them twice to do something. I didn't have to worry about anything. They took over, an excellent leader. She's phenomenal at being a leader and a student, and I know that she'll be successful in anything she pursues in her life.
I feel like you put your all into everything that you do in life, and that characteristic will take you very, very far.
Some activities I like to do outside of school are staying active and boxing at Gladiator Gym, and spending time with my friends, family, and my two cats.
I hope that we can be friends, and I don't just say goodbye to you at graduation and never see you again. I want to know, you know, where you go and what happens, and I want to know about all your successes.
After high school, I plan on going to college and getting my degree in political science, and then attending law school and becoming a lawyer.
So stay in touch. I hope you have a great rest of your senior year, and again, congratulations. You deserve it.
Avery, best of luck, and congratulations. Very happy for you, and I look forward to hearing of all your successes in the future.
Our next senior of the month is Evan Ren. Evan, come on down. Tonight, Evan is joined by a few of his coaches, so a round of applause for them as well.
And our next senior of the month is Evan Ren. Congratulations to both seniors.
Hello, my name is Evan Ren, and I'm proud to be named the February Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Coach Bonathott is here. I'd just like to congratulate Evan Ren on winning Student Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Evan, for winning Senior of the Month for February 2024. Well deserved.
Some clubs that I'm part of is wrestling, DECA, and Body Clubs.
I am so very proud of Evan and all of his accomplishments. I've had the opportunity and privilege to work with Evan both inside and outside of the classroom, especially through DECA, and I can say that it was so rewarding to see his hard work really pay off at the DECA competition last year. And most of us know Evan as being an amazing athlete and student, but he's also just a remarkable young man overall. He has a huge heart and genuine, down-to-earth personality that we all love.
So just to talk about a few things that set Evan Ren apart from the rest of the student population of our team, his work ethic, he has an amazing work ethic. He shows up to practice every day. He's early to practice. He's the last one to leave. He has great resilience. He's a very tough young man between the ears. That stuff that we preach the most in the wrestling room is just being mentally tough. And he's extremely coachable. You know, that's one of the qualities in student athletes that separate them from being average to good or good to great, is your ability to be coached, and Evan Ren has that to the fullest.
Favorite memory during high school is going to International for DECA and going on to this floor trip with all my seniors.
He is the type of student or type of wrestler that shows up to the youth tournament, and he's on the mat coaching the youth kids. He's after practice working with JV kids. He's a very team wrestler. He's for Lacy as a team, and he does a great job for us on and off the mat.
Evan is deserving of this award for so many reasons, but I think something that really stands out to me is just his natural drive and go-getter personality. I don't think there's anything that Evan has started that he hasn't finished, followed through on, and done amazingly well at, and that's something that we all admire.
My favorite things to do outside is to play soccer and play basketball with my friends.
He's, you know, he's a role model for our student athletes as well. He balances the three pillars that I talk about in the wrestling room as good as anybody, as that's academics, athletics, and your social life. I think it's important for teenagers to be able to understand that if you can balance those three things out while you're in high school, success is yours to get.
My future plan is going to college and going into computer science as one of my major.
Congratulations again, Evan, on winning Senior of the Month. We are all so very proud of you, and I can't wait to see where your future takes you.
Once again, just to congratulate Evan Ren on Senior Student of the Month. I wish him the best in the future, and he knows that I'm always in his corner, and Lacy Wrestling Program is always in his corner. Thank you.
Congratulations, folks, senior of the month. I do have one more presentation for the evening. I'd like to call up Eric Strohne. Eric, come on up. Eric's flying solo this evening because I literally have stolen him from practice. He's supposed to be in practice right now, so he's with us for a moment to be named for some of his accomplishments in the land, in the world of music. Eric has been named New Jersey Region 3 All South New Jersey Honors Wind Ensemble, New Jersey Region 3 All South Jersey Honors Orchestra, and New Jersey Region 3 All South Jersey Honors Clarinet Choir. So he's been named to all these things this year. He also auditioned in December and came in third out of 50 other students auditioning on clarinet for the high schools located in Ocean, Burlington, Atlantic, Cape May, Camden, Cumberland, Salem, and Gloucester Counties. So to say this young man is an accomplished musician is an understatement. He is phenomenal. He has the skills, talent, passion, puts in the hard work, and he truly deserves to be recognized this evening, and I'm very, very proud to stand next to him and shake his hand. He was performing, and he was. So yes, he is dedicated. He's walking out the door now to go. All right, Dr. Prera, that concludes my presentation.
So I just want to again acknowledge that, you know, when we had National Honor Society, the National Honor Society induction ceremony last Wednesday, Eric couldn't be there because he's so dedicated to his craft, and he was doing a concert. So another round of applause. I know he's not here, but it's just so deserving. Okay, so we have a couple more presentations. Ms. Nemec, I was going to steal your thunder, but I'm not going to do it. I'm so excited for the next presentation. So I'd like to introduce Cedar Creek Principal Holly Nemec.
All right. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite up James Papalea. He's a third grade student at Cedar Creek. Come on up, James. And he picked his outfit out special for this evening. All right. So I asked Dr. Prera and the Board if I could recognize James this evening. I had the opportunity to recognize James last year when he published his first book, and now, you're onto your second, that's available. I'll let James tell you where that's available. So James just recently published his second book called The Secret Drop: A Kid's World War II Adventure. So James is in Mrs. Papa's class, and he has such a passion for writing, but he's so well-rounded. So when Coach Bones was talking about being well-rounded, I think he just described James. So he has a passion not only for writing, but for his academics, for history, and for athletics. So in his first book, his first book was called The Secret Beach, and this book is called The Secret Drop. The second book takes readers on a journey through the major moments in World War II, and he's not by himself on this journey. He's with his sisters Ava and Emily, who are here. Hi, Ava and Emily. And his friends Connor, Finn, Mac, and Logan, as they navigate big, big moments in World War II. James, we're just so proud of your accomplishments, and I could speak, and I could tell you all about the book, but I thought it would be nice for James to read an excerpt from his book, so that's what he's going to do. Okay?
So, so this is called Chapter Two: The Battle of the Bulge.
Thank you.
So this is called Chapter Two: The Battle of the Bulge. I'm going to start. We woke up on a snowy, cold camp. My friends and I saw German soldiers surrounding us. It was cold, and everybody seemed scared. We saw German soldiers blindfolded coming to see General McCullough. The German soldiers told the general, surrender now, or you will all die. General McCullough said to them on a written piece of paper, nuts. The Germans were really shocked, and when they brought it back to their commander, he said, what is this guy, nuts? Ava, Emily, and Mac were riding on a tank with the legendary General George S. Patton. Patton was saying to his troops, get ready, move faster, we have to save these guys. The kids were scared and wondered where they were going. Mac asked a soldier who was walking behind the tank where they were going. The soldier said to Mac, we are going to save the soldiers at the Battle of the Bulge.
Do you want to tell them where, they want to know what the rest?
I'll make you buy on Amazon.
And James has a book for the district that he's going to bring up to sign.
Did he autograph it?
He'll autograph it. Thank you again. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So as James signs the book that he's dedicating to the district, another round of applause to him and to his family.
Well, it's a good way to keep their memory alive. Outstanding.
Thank you so much. Love it. Always good to have authors, young authors in Lacy Township. All right, our next presentation was supposed to happen in December, and we didn't get a chance to do that, and so Zoe, I'm going to introduce you in a moment, but I spoke to Zoe's mom in December, and we said, you know, let's wait till February because it's Heart Month. So at this time, it is my honor to introduce to you Andrea Marusik, Regional Director for the American Heart Association, who's going to tell us why we're recognizing Zoe tonight.
Okay, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Andrea Marusik, and I have had the honor to work with your school community for the past 13 years through our Kids' Heart Challenge Program, which is held each February and March in the elementary and middle schools. Through this program, we are able to share educational resources for PE, health, and social-emotional learning with your administrators, teachers, that encourage students to prioritize their heart and brain health. Students also get to participate in fun challenges and activities. They can learn hands-only CPR, and they can raise funds to support the AHA in our mission. Schools also receive gift backs for PE and wellness equipment to support their budgets. Each year, we have over 50% of the students in each of your schools take part in the program, and it has become a tradition that all the students look forward to. The success is due to your amazing principals for their leadership, the PE teachers for their efforts and passion, as well as the parent organizations and families for their generosity and support. Last year, we had the fortune, we were fortunate enough to welcome heart survivor Zoe Hardy as our local youth heart ambassador. As a sixth grader at Mill Pond, she was instrumental in implementing and promoting the Kids' Heart Challenge at her school. She shared her story of being born with congenital heart defects at assemblies and through videos, as well as in-school announcements. Her leadership and passion inspired 205 Mill Pond students to take the challenge to move more or be kind, and 31 families also learned how to save a life through hands-only CPR. The school also surpassed their goals to support research, education, and advocacy efforts for the heart disease and stroke. This year, Zoe has moved her efforts to the middle school, where she is now encouraging students and families to participate in our online module called Finn's Mission. In just one week, 288 students have registered and begun learning hands-only CPR, the warning signs of stroke, and the dangers of vaping and tobacco use. Zoe is also sharing her story at the elementary schools and throughout the district for their Kids' Heart Challenge events. Her initiative, motivation, confidence, empathy for others has truly inspired your school community. has truly inspired your school community, and for this reason, we would like to present Zoe with the National Youth Heart Leadership Award.
Thank you so much for having us, Andrea.
Thank you so much, Andrea, for being here. And I also want to recognize Zoe's family. She could not have done this without all of you, so congratulations.
Okay, so now's the time at our board meeting where we're recognizing our staff members of the month. And I always say that behind every successful student is an amazing teacher that helps him or her get there. So we have two staff members of the month. Our first is Rachel Rizzo, who's a preschool teacher at Mill Pond. Come on down, Rachel. And our second is Becky Thompson, who's our special education teacher at the middle school, so come on over. So I'm gonna read a little something about the two of you, and then, you know, we have to play our famous video, right? Okay, just so you know. Have you seen the video? Oh, it's very good. All right, so first, Rachel Rizzo was nominated by several of her colleagues. Ms. Rizzo was nominated by a few people who have said all of this about her. Ms. Rizzo consistently demonstrates high ideals, professionalism, knowledge, and the ability to help students become the very best they can be, both in the classroom and in the community. We have truly been blessed with an amazing teacher, outstanding colleague, and a true friend. Well-deserving, Rachel. Congratulations. We have a... Yeah, certificate, sorry. Round of applause to Rachel. Becky was nominated also by several of her colleagues, and this is what they had to say about you, Becky. Becky is kind, dedicated, optimistic, ethical, and a motivating leader. She always acts with integrity, never seeking accolades for doing what is right, such as coming in at 6:00 a.m. to reconstruct her classroom in the library when your classroom was recently flooded. That was not fun, but that's who you are. Becky's dedication to her students knows no bounds, as she is consistently acting in their best interests above her own needs. Congratulations, Becky. Well deserved. All right, Mr. Leidl.
Good morning. We're here at Mill Pond, and I have the privilege of going into one of our preschool teachers' rooms because she has been nominated for Staff Member of the Month. I'm so proud. Here we go, follow me.
Knock, knock. Knock, knock. Hi, where is Ms. Rizzo?
I'm right here.
Ms. Rizzo?
Hi.
We have a special announcement. I'm here to announce that you have been selected Staff Member of the Month.
We nominated Rachel Rizzo for Staff Member of the Month because she's an outstanding teacher and staff member.
She's dedicated to her children, she's dedicated to her staff members, and she's always giving without hesitation.
She brings a really positive energy into our building that perks up everybody's days, and she never lets her personal life get in the way of doing what's best for the kids.
Her goal is to always make sure her students are taken care of and are well-educated.
She definitely has the most infectious smile I have ever seen.
And laugh.
Yeah, and laugh, and we could not think of a more deserving person.
All right, good morning, everybody. We are so proud today to go visit the February Staff Member of the Month, who is Becky Thompson. She does an amazing job here at LTMS and works with our student population, who also runs our school cafe. So we're gonna surprise her. Her class is in there. Nobody has any idea. Come take a walk with us. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, everybody. I'm so sorry to interrupt your day, but I have some amazing news. In this room, we have so many great adults that work with you each and every day. Would you agree?
Yes.
Comes up?
Yes.
All right. Well, one of them in this room has been named the February Staff Member of the Month of the district, the Lacey Township School District, and that is, drum roll, can you hear drum roll? Mrs. Thompson! Well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kelly Walsh, and I recommended Mrs. Thompson as Teacher of the Month. She is an awesome teacher, always puts the children first, and does whatever she needs to do to make sure their day is a great one, and I'm very thankful for that.
All right, and we will end my comments tonight with our February Lacey Now. And that's a wrap.
Parents, now is your time to escape. If you want to, it starts getting fun.
Congratulations.
It's all up to you.
Hey Rebecca, how are you?
Good night.
We got that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, nice job. Hey, real quick. What is hands-only CPR? Is that something new? Just chest compressions?
It's just chest compression.
Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, cool. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Good job, Zoe.
All right, and before I conclude my comments, I just wanted to, I know Mr. King scooted out because the science fair is going on, and the board had the opportunity, before our meeting started, to go see the science projects, and I don't know about you, but I was blown away by some of the projects. The Best in Show was incredible. So I think they're right in the middle of finding out who the winners are, right, Mr. Zalinski?
Uh, they're probably right on now, yes.
Yeah, excellent, so.
We know. We agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, yes, we know. We won't say anything. All right, that concludes my comments. Board President Peters.
Thank you, Dr. Prera. Next, we're gonna have a public comment. Any audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand when called upon, state their name, address, and affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made on one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there's an established chain of command to follow. Do we have anyone for public comment? Anyone for public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Please state your name and address.
Rhianne Mendez, 1771 Woodside Road, Fork River. I'm here tonight as a parent, and I've been considering this topic for four years, when it became an issue for my older daughter, but now it also applies to my youngest. I've also considered that we've experienced one crisis after another, which I feel has made a lot of us really weary. And tonight, I'd like to bring awareness and a request to consider in regard to our special education programming. Four years ago, the district decided to do away with pull-out small group instruction. And at the time, I was dismayed, as my daughter, who has an IEP, was receiving small group instruction at Mill Pond and was being thrust into an ICR setting in middle school with everything with COVID. And she is a very quiet child. She would not speak up for herself in a large setting, and often would choose not to participate over the fear of looking stupid if she answered incorrectly. She cared deeply about what other people thought, and knew that she had a hard time reading out loud with her dyslexia. Her writing was even more challenging, and in her own reflection, she genuinely feels that without her small group instruction at Mill Pond, she would not have been able to keep up in middle school. And considering fifth and sixth grade is the transition from learning how to read to reading how to, reading to learn, that was very impactful for her. And this brings me to my youngest daughter. I've spoken here about her once, how through our virtual learning, she could not grasp the phonics concept she needed to read. It turned out that she too has a learning disability that needed remediation, and she was put into an ICR class of 30 second graders. Coming out of COVID, we battled masking because she couldn't understand the teachers. She couldn't focus with so many students in the room, and without prompting, she often did not complete her work. If a teacher was out, there was often no substitute, leaving her lost. The teachers were told small group instruction had to be within the room, and she made very little progress that year, which led me to change her placement to LLD. It was my only option, because small group pull-out instruction is no longer available. To give her the best chance to overcome her disabilities, I opted for her to enter the Wilson Reading Program, and she has been making amazing progress and gains to her lexile. This is due to the wonderful program her teachers put together and the work they've invested in her and building her confidence and her dedication to improving. Unfortunately, she will have to continue to work in a self-contained LLD classroom. While she might be ready to take on more challenging academics, she cannot do it in a full-class setting, when still to this day, with substitute shortages, if someone's out, there's often no sub for the other teacher. In a classroom of 25 to 30 students, it's highly distracting for our regular population. Add ADD and dyslexia, and much of the content is lost for her. Part of me feels absolutely ridiculous for bringing this up in a budget crisis, because I know that we're in a position that teachers are probably going to be cut, and we won't be adding programs, but removing some. But as a mom, I needed to say it again, because our LLD rooms are full, and it's, in my opinion, a need for small group instruction that's not in a full classroom setting. There is an immense value in our pull-out resource for students with learning disabilities and attention issues. And I know she's not alone. My older daughter, if she had not had that small group instruction that she received at Mill Pond, I don't think that she would be where she is now in high school, which she is completely mainstreamed. And I thank all of the teachers that participated in that, but I just, I needed to say it one more time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Please state your name and your address. Be careful, there's a ramp there. People won't see it.
My name is Debbie Contadine. I live at 1262 Pensacola Road in Fork River. And I'm here on behalf of the Lacey High School Main Boosters. So, this is all positive, so. So on behalf of the Main Boosters, we decided that we wanted to try to keep the Board of Education in the loop as to what we're doing, what we're raising money for, as well as the public. People always ask us every year, we have a big gift auction, and they always ask us, you know, where does the money go? Now with budget cuts, and possibly some sports being cut, or clubs, we're trying to step up as much as we possibly can. So as a booster club, we support our athletic teams, the clubs in the school, and performing arts program. So far, so far to date, we've given about $14,000 to teams and clubs. Just a few examples, I'll give you what we've done. We've provided funds to comp cheer for practice space. We've given money to women's basketball for their warm-up jerseys. We contributed towards the men's soccer B-South jackets. And we gave $400 to each of the 17 sub-boosters for equipment and for team needs. We also provide the Golden Paw Awards, which are given out at the banquet. Everybody knows that. So in the upcoming months, we will be spending a decent amount of money. We plan to replace and/or repair the chairs in the gym that are being used for women's basketball, men's basketball, women and men's volleyball, as well as wrestling. So we've been in touch with Ms. Delvento, and she's been getting us quotes and prices. Some of them may be able to be repaired, so we're working with different companies that she's had a relationship with before and getting these quotes. So we plan on doing that within the next couple of months, which would be a significant amount of money. What we, a major part of our money is the scholarships for the seniors. So we are always known for being very generous to our seniors, especially the ones that are involved in all of our things that we do. And we also plan on giving more money back to our sub-boosters before the end of the year. So we have our big gift auction, which is on March 2nd. And from what I heard, that we may possibly have a couple of board members who may come and pull numbers for us that day. We think it's important that the Board of Education is prominent there, and shown there to the whole community, to show that you're there to support us and the kids. So we look forward to that. And we decided that we're gonna send somebody every couple of months and let you guys know what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. Is March 2nd sold out? I know that usually sells out. Not yet. So how would the public, how can we announce to the public to get them tickets for that?
You can go on the Boosters, Main Boosters Facebook page. And all the information is on there, on the flyers there. You can send your money into school with the flyer, print the flyer, send the money into school. We're accepting it all the way up until that Thursday. So you can mail it in, drop it off at school, whatever you need to do. Or you can respond onto the Facebook page.
Thank you.
And it's LTHS Main Boosters.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Please state your name and address.
Yes. Regina DeCenzo, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. That was some great news from Debbie and the boosters. That was some great news from Debbie and the boosters. Those were great events when I attended them, the gift auctions were fantastic. Tonight, I'll try to keep my comments brief. First, I'm sure someone must have seen my guest editorial article in the Asbury Park Press on page A12 this past Sunday, February 11th. I got some reactions and suggestions. One I found particularly interesting was from the spouse of an employee who claimed a particular classroom was cold. With brand-new, very expensive boilers in the high school, I sure hope it's not this building. I did ask the person which school, and they didn't get back to me. So here's my request. Could all the head custodians in each school building please check to see if all the classroom thermostats are working correctly since it's still winter, winter, and find out which classrooms and where have poor heat? I know I hated being freezing in the winter in the 100-year-old school building I used to work in, in New York City. That should not be the case here in Lacey since we don't have 100-year-old buildings. Next point, someone suggested a rolling referendum. Instead of trying to do a massive, expensive project, try rolling the improvements. By that, they meant making a list of critical, ready-to-break-immediately stuff into incremental jobs, or for example, focus improvements to one building at a time instead of trying to do all six, all six. And last, I heard from a very reliable source that $50 million may be the amount sought for this referendum. I sure hope that is a very inflated, untrue figure. And by the way, does any board member know how much debt the district currently owes, and when is the payoff date? According to an email from Ms. Ormsby this past week, it's $11 million, and 2026 is the payoff date. Now, it's very strange that $11 million already came up when Dr. Pereira mentioned budget cuts for this year. It's very strange that both numbers just happen to be $11 million. More suggestions include, of course, looking for grants and special programs. Please use the BPO, BPU website, Board of Public Utilities, and then follow the links on the Clean Energy Program tab. There are also federal incentives to explore. I am not doing this district's legwork, but there's stuff out there, and it needs to be explored. And if at all possible, could someone please attend the NJSBA Delegate Assembly on May 18th, usually held at Mercer County College? Has anyone given a state NJSBA report since I was on the Board? To the best of my knowledge, has anyone been to Delegate Assembly since 2021?
So, did you wish to?
Anybody go? Nobody's gone, that's wonderful. I think somebody should go to Trenton and go to Delegate Assembly and talk to other board members and find out what's going on, especially financially. Okay? You have to sign up in advance to attend as a voting delegate. It is a public meeting, and anyone can attend, board member or not. I went a few times as a member of the public, but generally, for the last two years, I have been away during Delegate Assembly, so I can't report anything back to you. I'm not going to review everything on the website, it's not my job anymore. And Mr. Peters, I know you've probably been very curious as to why I've opened your emails. I was looking for training and meeting attendance, county or state, and I didn't see any, and it looked like you only attended one session at Workshop 2023. I hope that's correct. If not, you need to look into that. And I have one other proofreading item. As soon as I get the superintendent's report, the first thing I usually look at is student enrollment, and the total was missing this month. So, I would hope that that will be proofread better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else under public comment?
Oh, no. Oh, that's John.
Allison Hollister, Forkett River. I'm just going to pick up where Ms. Mendez left off about the pull-out program. I think that it is a disservice to our special education students who do not have this program. My daughter was in this program in the elementary school and flourished until it was taken away during the COVID years. Yes, she did great on computer because she had me at home helping her every step of the way. Fast forward to middle school where she's struggling severely, low grades, anxiety, just overall poor retention of some information. This year, she's doing phenomenal because she has a good support system of teachers behind her who are helping her every step of the way, and one of those teachers is here tonight, and I want to thank her so much, and she knows who she is, both of them, I should say, they are here. But without them, she'd be lost in the shuffle, as well as other students who are throughout this district, lost in the shuffle with this ICR program. There are teachers who are absent, teachers, no substitutes, where you have 20 minutes of ICR that's helping these kids, trying to help these kids learn, and they can't. Kids with ADD, kids with ADHD who are lost in the shuffle, it's not fair to these students. And I wasn't going to say anything, but with the looming budget crisis that is coming up, we need to consider these students and what they mean to us and to our district because they're lost, and if they're lost, they're going to continue to be lost. I'm afraid for next year, I'm afraid to send my daughter to high school next year because I don't know how it's going to be for her. I'm already looking into several other districts who offer better marking, better eight-period classes, have two double maths, two double Englishes to help support her, better special education programs. How hard is that? How horrible is that, that I can't even send my daughter to my own school district because I don't know what's going to happen next year with our special education system? It's, it's, it's disheartening as a parent, as a taxpayer, that I might have to send my daughter elsewhere for special education services. And it's not just me, it's other families who are also looking into this as well. So we need to think about when we're doing these budget cuts, who we're cutting, what teachers are losing their jobs, because there's so many teachers out there who give a damn about these kids and love them and do so much and step up and help support these students who are falling behind. So I just want you to remember that when you're looking at the budget and you're thinking about who you have to cut, what you have to cut, think about these students who are falling behind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, close the floor for public comment, and we'll go with board committee reports. Mr. Connery?
So, for policy on February 7th, it was myself, Mr. Bell, and Ms. Klaus, and Dr. Pereira. Discussion about student cellphone use, policy 5600, as well as the handbooks for the high school and not middle school, pros and cons to either side of it. Policies reviewed and talked about. P1110, the organizational chart was updated for the current positions, and the district was, or have a wording cleanup. R3212 and R4212, on attendance, were revised for language change, for personal leave to sick and unpaid leave. Policy 5111 was for the eligibility of residents and non-resident students. When we adopted it two months ago, I believe, part of it was left out, so beyond. And then, P5620 expulsion, this was headed for, first read, and it was not included in the previous policy alert updates from Strauss estimate. We also talked about a policy 5332 on, on, to not resuscitate orders. There was questions off back and forth, and are going to talk about it again in March. And then, Dr. Pereira showed us the green schools calendar for the summer, and we were done around quarter to six, and our next meeting is on the 13th of March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Connery. Ms. Walker?
Okay, Curriculum Committee met on February 13th. In attendance was Mrs. Armato, Dan, Mr. Bell, myself, and Mr. Zalinski. We discussed the science fair, which is held and over tonight, and tonight, we had the opportunity, the Board, to see all the projects at 5:00, and very impressive. I don't know how they judge what they judge, but they were really, really good. And I came to the science fair when I was a kid and, and when I had my daughter, but the, the time and effort that goes into those projects is commendable to everyone. We talked about a credit proposal, proposal. Wait a minute, I'm looking at, where's your, here we go. Mr. Zalinski described in detail the proposal that has been worked out with the high school administration to lower the required number of credits to graduate from 130 credits to 120 credits. He explained that this proposal would be partially a cost-saving measure that would allow students who have reached their state-mandated 120 credits to seek jobs or college opportunities outside of the school day. He also further explained that the proposal would not affect students who wished to complete more credits if they wanted to. They could take further curricular opportunities in their senior year. Now, most students, most of the students already earn 120 credits by the end of their junior year, but need to complete English 12 and Phys Ed and Health in their senior year, so most students will still complete 130 credits. This lower of the credits allows for flexibility in the high school master schedule that will allow for efficiencies to be created in the time of tight budgets. This proposal will be going to the policy committee for, to be looked at and for adoption, possible adoption. CUSAC is March 27, 2024. That's when the state comes in and evaluates our district. Let's see. PD Day is, when is that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And Mrs. Elise Spafford and Kelly Walsh will be facilitate, facilitating a workshop on implementing the assessment of functional living skills, you're killing me with these, in our middle school and high school multiple disabilities and autism programs. AFLS, that's Assessment of Functional Living Skills, provides a systematic way to evaluate, track, and teach functional, adaptive, and self-help skills so that individuals with autism or developmental delays can become more independent. Winter challenger season has concluded, but a spring schedule has not yet been released. Technology, we discussed the one-to-one program in the district. Mr. Zalinski described a proposal to buy one class set of Chromebooks that would be issued to students in sixth grade and would be issued to them throughout their years in Lacey. This would allow the Chromebook program to continue in light of tight budgets and the desire to sustain the program. The STEM Academy transitioned the full lab to a new classroom. Intergenerational Sweetheart Luncheon, under Community Relations, their Sweetheart Luncheon is on February 21st. And he also, Mr. Zalinski also provided a synopsis of the budget build from the curriculum personnel perspective. He explained that this was the proposed cut so far, but was a tentative list that changes like hourly, that would need to be revised as the budget build continues. LTEA, on a side note, we met, our Curriculum Committee met with the Executive Board of the LTEA, and normally, I don't report what we talk about in that meeting. It's pretty confidential between the LTEA and the Board, just talking about things that are happening in the district. But I have to say that they were so complimentary, if you don't mind me sharing this, about our guidance counselors, when everything was going on in our high school, our, our dark days, the guidance community, Guidance Department was all there. They said Mrs. Purperay was a fantastic, very comprehensive, the way they had all the teachers and students when they needed help. It was well organized, communication was great, and it was a well-oiled machine in the high school. They also wanted to thank Mr. Bond for providing, organizing flu shots for the faculty and staff, and grounds and transportation, and a huge thank you to the grounds and custodian people for all the enormous job they did this summer moving classrooms to their new assignments, and I thought that's coming from their peers, so I thought that should be noted out loud. So, thank you for the compliments to our whole entire staff. Health and Wellness, Mr. Zalinski shared that this will be the last of our five-day professional development series for staff. He shared the Lacey Staff Mental Health and Wellness Resource Guide. He shared that this guide that was developed by Guidance Supervisor Leah Purperay to provide resource for parents and staff related to mental health and wellness, and it's an absolute wonderful document that she put together. So congratulations to her for that. He also shared the flyer for staff wellness events that are open to high school staff during their prep or lunch period on select days to promote staff wellness. And then, also, just like Jack said, we discussed the green calendar for the green days in the summer, and that's it. So the next meeting is scheduled for March 12th, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Klaus, would you like to do finance, please?
Sure. We had our meeting February 8th. It was myself, alternate Mr. Peters, Mr. Connery, Dr. Pereira, and Ms. Ormsby. We started out our meeting with our Township Liaison Committee. A few things we discussed, well, Mr. McDonald, Pete Quiratolo, and Veronica LaRae were in attendance. Few things we talked about was a budget overview. We talked about the extra question we might be putting on for the district in November. We briefly discussed the referendum. We had an update on their building in the township. They just talked about that a little bit. Manchester and Haynes Construction Update, she just updated us on the status of that project. Crossing Guards was another topic that we are in need for additional crossing guards. We also discussed Class III Officers. It was just a conversation to start talking about the contract coming up 24, 25 school year. And also lighting and state parking lot in the transportation building. It just seems that it's a little dark, so they're going to be looking into getting some lighting in there for them. That was about an hour, and then we started our regular meeting, which was approximately three hours long. We started with the STEM Room Project update. The kids are in, which we're very excited about. We're going to have a ribbon cutting probably the end of February, beginning of March, but I don't think a date has been set yet. We talked about the Fire Alarm Project update. So they were given a punch list, which was completed, and then a second punch list was given. They are coming this Thursday to look at the second punch list. Hopefully, that's the last one. We had a synergistics update. It was just presented during the workshop. The SDA Emergent and Capital Needs Grant. This grant was given to us, it's $92,000. We didn't even apply for it, but we got it, which is great. So Mr. Smith came in with a list of things that he said is urgent to get done, some doors, lighting, things like that. We haven't decided yet, we're still waiting on the cost. We'll let you know when that list comes up. We talked briefly about the referendum. Ms. Ormsby led a discussion on the status of the referendum committee and discussed the bond council contract, which you will see on tonight's agenda. Goose droppings, again, another complaint. The township is going to clean or sweep the walkway now once a week instead of twice a month. We discussed the doors at Cedar Creek and the middle school. There's a need to replace two doors at Cedar Creek and two doors at the middle school, which are on the agenda also. We discussed the pre-K facility grant. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the playground quotes. That's also on the agenda tonight. The rod grant we discussed, that's also on the agenda. So, we're going to start with the high school roof and middle school HVAC. Nothing really new to discuss on the 24-25 budget that we haven't been discussing at length. We discussed briefly the question on the November ballot. We're still kind of tossing that back and forth on what to put on there, if anything. We had a brief discussion on budget line item transfers, just why we do it and, you know, why you see it on the, on the budget, on the agenda. Auditor RFP. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion that we're going out for an RFP for new auditor. And HVAC bid, Ms. Ornsby led a discussion that we're going to go out for bid for the HVAC. Bus purchases, that's also on the agenda. We're going to replace two 54-passenger buses and two vans for the next school year. Driver training. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the need to increase the stipend amount for the Transportation Coordinator for training new drivers. And we discussed the Green Day calendar, and that is it. The next meeting is March 14th.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right. We're having an additional finance meeting, February 22nd. Right, yeah. And then the one after that will be March 14th.
What's our new date on here? Do you remember real quick, Sharon? Because it's also February 22nd for the 20.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
The buses, that's required by law that we replace them, correct?
Yes, and that's on the agenda tonight for approval as well.
What's the timeline on that? Do you remember on the buses, when we have to replace them? Isn't there?
I think it's every 10 years.
Every 10 years.
10 years.
And their lease, correct?
Correct, yeah. It'll be a seven-year lease.
Seven-year lease, saves us money.
I believe we're doing February 28th.
28th, I thought it was, thank you. I'll just report that.
Okay, we had a referendum meeting with myself, Mrs. Walker, Mr. Armato, Dr. Pereira, Ms. Ornsby, Mr. Zalinski, and John Smith. Our facilities educator also present was the architect and a financial consultant. And we did a, there was a feasibility study on the buildings to find out where our biggest problems are from the architect. We talked about that. We talked about timelines, a discussion on timelines. We also talked about possibly marketing the referendum so we can explain to the public what we're doing. We're going to open up the buildings to the public so they can actually see the repairs that we want to complete because just by talking about them, more explaining, showing exactly what the problems are, what we want to, what we do. We don't want to build brand-new buildings. We want to repair our existing ones that are currently have problems. Our roofs, our HVAC is what our goal is with this. We were done by, we started at 2:30. We were done around 4:30, and our next meeting is going to be February 28th at 3:30. Next, we have superintendent comment.
Yes, I have a few. So, first, I want to talk about superintendent's report. Regina, you are correct. We inadvertently left that total enrollment out, so we'll make sure that doesn't happen again. But to err is human. But you also reminded me to talk a little bit about superintendent's report because we spend so much time talking about, you know, our seniors of the month and our unsung hero, which is fantastic, but there is so much great information in the superintendent's report. And I think next month, I might take a little bit of time to just point out some of the great things that our students are doing. So, thank you for that reminder. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about staff reductions and how we make those decisions because very often, I think the public doesn't know the difference or perhaps the status on tenure versus non-tenure. So, those decisions, staff reductions, are made based on tenure and non-tenure status, which means that very often, the district is forced to RIF, which stands for Reduction in Force, all non-tenure teachers because they haven't earned that tenure. So, you know, very often, it happens regardless of what is taught, who that person is. It's not based on performance. It's simply because we do have a considerable amount of teachers who have not earned tenure, which happens, by the way, after four years and one day. If we get to the point where the budget forces us to continue to reduce staff, then we have to take a look at tenure status. But that also is very dependent on certifications, length of service, the position that perhaps needs to be eliminated. And that is a very careful process that happens with Mr. Zalinski, myself, the principals, the other administrators who oversee various departments. And so, I just wanted to make that distinction because I know that, you know, very often, we'll get to the point where parents and students come to the podium and beg us to not let, you know, Mrs. Smith go and Mrs. Jones go, making names up. I'm not talking about Mrs. Smith or Mrs. Jones. I'm not even sure we have a Mrs. Smith or Mrs. Jones. But, you know, our hands very often are, our hands are tied because we have to follow by statute tenure laws. We don't have a choice. And that's just not Lacy Township. That's all public school districts. So, I just wanted to make that distinction while we appreciate the parents and the students that come up here and talk about our wonderful teachers. By the way, all of our teachers are wonderful. We do not enjoy being in the position that we are in and having to make these really tough decisions. But it is a process, and it's a process that we take very seriously, that we scrutinize very carefully before doing the things that we have to do. And I'm always open to answer any questions. I'm a phone call away. If you want to stop in, I will further explain that process if anybody needs further clarification.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we're going to work on to board member comments. Mr. Bell?
Congratulations to all the students. I love the little author. I'm impressed. I aspire to be like him someday.
Ms. Armato?
Congratulations to all the students and the staff who were recognized tonight. Great job. I also want to thank Lacy Boosters for all you do and for your generosity to the students of this district. And to the comments in regards to the small group instruction, we have a meeting on March 12th. I'm going to ask that it be put on the agenda for discussion just so we can discuss it. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ma, Lee?
Sure. Yeah, I've got a couple of things, if you don't mind. Couple of years ago, when I ran for the school board, I took a stance against some of the New Jersey state mandates. And this community came together for me, and it was amazing. I was overwhelmed by the support I got. And through some of the, I'm going to use a word. I don't know if it's the right word. It's not hatred. It was difference of opinion. Friendships were formed as well because we had a difference of opinion. Although we didn't believe in the same thing, we started to work together. We started to see that we can work together, even though we had a difference of an opinion. And so, tonight, as I sit at this dais proudly every month, every committee meeting, every time I get to represent this district, I'm going to ask for that same support that you gave me when I ran two, three years ago and ask you to help us, help us, help this district, help this board to get some of this money back. You understand? We need your help. I'm asking you as a taxpayer. I'm asking you as a 17-year resident of Lacy Township, and I'm asking you as a board member to help us fight Trenton and get this money back. The same excitement, the same tenacity, the same passion we had to fight mask mandates and medical freedom and all that things. We need that same passion now, this community, to help fight Trenton and getting some of this money back. I know Dr. Pereira is going to go on the offensive and educate as many people as she can in our community, but I'm asking you to keep an open stance here, to keep an open eye and an open view on what's going on. We are not, we are not trying to hurt this district. We are not out here saying, who do we want to cut today? It's not a fun thing to do. Whether you're in the private district or whether you're in the public school district, no one enjoys saying, we're going to fire this person today. Anybody that enjoys that should see a psychiatrist. To sit around and talk about cutting something that's near and dear to me, athletics, it's absurd. Class size is going up. It's crazy. Rhiannon and you guys making claims for the smaller classes for your, for your needs, for your child. Listen, we talk about school rankings. We got no money. We can't improve school rankings. We talk about saving programs. We got no money. We can't save any programs. And we talk about all these things that we need to do, and we keep thinking about what happened yesterday. We've got to forget about yesterday. We've got to look at the future together. There's a lot of stuff that's going to come down here. And if we can pull through this together as a community, there's a lot that we might just be able to overcome. So, I'm asking you, as a board member, as a taxpayer, and as a resident, and as a parent of children that have either gone to this school or graduated from this school, to pull together with us and help us fight this fight and get some of this money back, to dive into why they're taking so much money, to ask questions, to hold people accountable, including ourselves, hold us accountable. But we're going to hold you accountable. We need your help. We need your help. We need the same excitement that people have when something's about to be cut. Save our sports, save our benefits, save our whatever. This is a time where we can shine as a community. We can shine as a district, and we can shine as a people. And I don't know if it's a public plea, whatever, but as a guy who loves this town and is very active in this town, I think I've seen that when we pull together, we can do a lot of great things in this town. So, I'm asking you, whatever you can do, write letters, make phone calls, come and ask us how we can help. Maybe we, we go to the library and we, we have a night where everybody's writing letters, and we all mail them at the same time. We need to make noise. Get a bus to Trenton, make noise. Let's make noise because this is not the intention of our superintendent to say, let's cut more money. No, it's where we're starting from, and we don't want to start from in the red anymore. We want to, we want to challenge Trenton to find out why. What is it that you're cutting from us and why? Because it's not hurting just the teachers and the administrators. It's hurting the most important person in our district, the kids who have to attend school here. And if we don't think that's as serious as wearing a mask, then, you know, we all need to be reevaluated. So, let's come together, please, as a community. Let's fight this thing. If you have any ideas, please follow the chain of command. Reach out to the board president, reach out to Mrs., Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zalinski, and say, how can we help? And I guarantee it. You know, when you put heads together for a common cause, there usually is a solution. So, I ask you that tonight, when you look at this agenda and say, oh, my God, we're cutting this and we're cutting that, don't think of it that way. It's how can we get this money back? That's what we need your help with. So, that's my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Connery. I know we don't have a lot to say, but Mr. Armato just took everything and put it out there perfectly. There's not much else to say after that. So, thank you, Sal.
You're welcome.
Ms. Walker?
Okay, I was just jotting some notes down. At first, I want to congratulate all our seniors of the month and our staff of the month. And what was it, was it Little Boy James with his new book? That is, I am going to order it because it looks so, so good. But what Sal said, he really, that was excellent, Sal, the way you worded that. If you actually, and I think, Dr. Pereira, you have this list of the cuts that we have had to make in the last five, six years. We'll have to read that off in the next couple of meetings. You'll be like, what, all the things that we've had to cut that our students don't have anymore because of the cuts in the past. And now, this year, they're going to hammer us even harder. So, what Sal said, we need your support. We all need to come together. This board is working together to do what they can, but we need, you know, your support to get this done. But Sal, that was excellent, the way you worded it. Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just say one more thing?
Absolutely. No.
Eric, who came out for the clarinet, he was first chair at the Clarinet Chamber Concert. I had the privilege of going to that last Wednesday night, and it was phenomenal. You would think these students, there were five of each instrument, five clarinets, five percussion, five flutes, five horns, and they were the top of the top. And you sat there and you could have sworn you were in Carnegie Hall. It was so good. And he was just phenomenal. He's just, and he doesn't brag. He's just, yeah, I got first chair. So, congratulations to him. Yeah, it was great. Thank you.
Good.
I'm done.
So, I figured it out. I've got about 13 hours this week, 14 hours this week in board meetings, conversations, and phone calls. Not that I always keep track of it, but I add it up. But be up here for 15 minutes to see these kids, you know, the book authors and the awards, it makes it all worth it. You know, that's, that's some of the parts of this positive stuff on there. And Mr. Armato, that was a good, a good talk on there. Agree 100%. But what I'd like to add is that none of these board members sitting up at this dais right now signed up for this. We all signed up, ran a campaign, spent time after our elections to get up here to improve these schools. And it's not us, it's the state cutting us money. Just got to remember that. It's not us, it's the state cutting us money. If, I'm a contractor, and if you want me to remodel your kitchen, and you say, hey, I only got 10 grand. I can't put any grand in countertops. Okay, it's very simple. And if we're trying to build this school up and everybody's saying about our, our levels and where we're at and blah, 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 and funding and this and that, but if you don't have the money, you can't do it. It's that simple. You know, I'd love to have class sizes of 15 or 20 in some other districts, but we don't have the money. We've lost 113 employees in five years we've cut because of state cuts to us. 113 employees in five years we've cut, and we're still not done. So, that's it. Thank you. And let's move on to... DJ? A1, can I have a motion, please, for meeting minutes? Page two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page two, list of bills, A2. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes, but I need to stand, Ms. Ornsby, 953814, and my employer, 289299 and 283300.
Thank you. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to stand on 211210, please.
Thank you.
Pages two and three, transfers, and S1701, A through four. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Pages three to 11, Finance and Facilities, A5 to A19. Can I have a roll call, please?
Hold one second.
Oh, we need to...
A18 will just be as changed on the addendum.
Okay.
And I believe A19 also as changed on the addendum.
Everybody get that? 18, 19, we good? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please?
I have a discussion.
Sure.
Number seven, under... Number 7, under the Rod Grant acceptance.
What page is that, Ms. Claus?
Uh, go to page 4.
4?
In the back, yeah. It just says, "Work shall include at the bottom, removal and replacement of existing roof-mounted solar panels." I mean, I don't know, should we, just to keep an eye on, maybe not putting those solar panels back on if they need to be removed soon? Since this will be a new roof, just a thought that maybe we should.
Page 4 here, project for the roof.
They probably won't be replaced, yeah.
Oh, they're not going to be put on?
No, probably they won't. They won't be.
They won't be. Okay, thank you.
That's a new EDPM roof, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 11, A20 to A21. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Armato, Mr. Armato, motion seconded by Mr. Connery.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 12, A22 to A24, can I have a motion, please?
Hold on. A22 will also be as amended on the addendum.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have someone to second that?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 12, calendars, A25 to A27. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
The 18. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Can I have page 12, policy and regulations, A28, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 12, the HIBs, A29 to A30, can I have a motion, please?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
And Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 13, B, donations, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and thank you. Page 13, C, professional days, workshops, and travel, can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 13 to 17, D, certified personnel, D1 to D13, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Can I have a second, please? I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes, and congratulations, Ms. Ash.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes, and congratulations to Mrs. Ash. Oh, and I have to abstain. I'm sorry. I'm so happy for her that she's, yeah. I'm abstaining on number 11. Mr. Brand, what was it? Certified Personnel, number 11.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Armato?
Can I bring something up for discussion? Number 7, co-curricular athletics stipend.
Number 7?
Yeah.
What page, Mr. Armato?
Page 14 and 15. I am probably going to get hated for saying this, but I'm going to say it. We're paying a lot of money to coach. We're paying a ton of money to coach. And for a district that's looking for money, even if we cut these stipends in half, they're still making good money to coach.
I think it's contractual.
And I think this is something that maybe we should bring up and discuss because a cut is a cut. And if it saves it, if we totalize all up and we save a teacher or we save a program, by all means, I'll take that, I'll take that hit for saving something. So I'd like to take a look at these stipends and figure out some of it is absurd.
Those are contractual. Any changes would have to be negotiated with the association.
It's contractual, this?
Yes.
Well, bring it up the next time we have a contract. With Willie Offatt. But other than that, yes.
His vote.
Okay.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 17 through 21, E, non-certified personnel, E1 through E9, can I?
I'll move.
Motion, please. We have Ms. Walker with a motion.
Second.
Mr. Connery with a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Connery?
Yes, and congratulations.
Mrs. Walker?
I'm going to vote no for Mrs. McCarron. I don't want her to leave. I'm kidding, but.